Good morning. Welcome to the Gadsden City Council meeting. I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised, our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gadsden YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Eva Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Latham.
President.
Councilman Smith.
Here.
Councilman Avery.
Here.
Councilman Back.
Here.
Councilman Wilson.
Here.
Councilwoman Minatra.
Here.
And Councilman Robinson.
Here.
We have a quorum present, and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to request Heath Williamson to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the blessings you freely give us. We just thank you for your love, your grace, and your mercy, Father. We ask that you guide us and direct us. Ask your blessings to continue to remain on this city, this council, and Mayor, his office, administration, Father. We just pray for your guidance, Father, your direction. Pray that we understand clearly your will and never resist you in any moment. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Public Works Committee Work Session and City Council Meeting held on October 17th.
So moved.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
Item 6, the Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of October 13th through the 19th. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Item 7 is reserved for proclamations and commendations. Mayor has none today. We have some guests, the council does. I'd like to invite Tara Fullford and Teresa Taylor. They represent a local organization called Never Surrender. You might remember about one year ago, these ladies were here, and we started the Pink Garbage Can Campaign, which is to coincide with Breast Cancer Awareness Month. So ladies, thank y'all for being here, and thank you for the work you've done prior to last year, but all this past year in the conjunction with our Pink Can program.
Yeah, so I want to say thank you all for letting us come and speak to you today. We're just here more about, like, awareness today, to let you know what's going on, what we've been up to, and...
Is there a green light?
No.
Just hit that button right there. Thank you.
Sorry, now can you hear me better?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's fine.
So just, and I, there are several of you that I have not met yet, so I would like to, I'm Tara Fullford, and this is Teresa Taylor. We're both with Never Surrender, and I'll give you a little background about what we do. So we're a 501(c)(3). We started in 2011 here in Gadsden, and it was supposed to be a nonprofit where we could kind of guide people to resources, because we had a dear friend of ours that was diagnosed with breast cancer, and there was just no resources for just like her going through treatment and things like that. Well, it snowballed, and we became kind of the source. So now we have three programs that we do for the community, and we stay local to Edwah and Calhoun County. So our first program is the mammogram voucher program. So anyone who lives in Edwah or Calhoun County who says they need a mammogram and can't afford it, insured or not insured, we will pay for their mammogram. We also have a financial assistance program that pays for anyone who is currently going through treatment for breast cancer. They'll pay, help pay medical bills, utility bills. We pay childcare, just so that someone can continue to work, just because when those bills start coming in, it's a little overwhelming. So a fact with that is, to date, we have paid back almost half a million dollars in financial assistance to Edwah and Calhoun County and paid for over 600 mammograms. So we're pretty proud of that number. So, and our third program is we go into the high schools, Teresa and I do, and we talk to, we partner with Dr. Perani and men up Gadsden, and we talk to the girls and boys just about general, you know, health and wellness, and we do, the women, we teach them breast self-exams, and then Dr. Perani takes the boys and goes and talks to them.
We included Dr. Frederick, too.
Oh, yeah, and Dr. Frederick also comes with us, too, to talk to the girls. So it's really interesting to see how well they engage, the high school girls, and the questions they ask, and I guess things they aren't taught, you know, they can ask us questions, and it's just awareness, getting it out there. And that's another thing with the Pink Can Project, which we're super glad that you guys have provided the opportunity for us to do that. And I think the cans are housed at the city with other cans that you guys have. We actually had a sponsor that came in as advanced imaging, and they paid for the pink trash cans outright to begin with. So all $95 that we sell the cans for is profit for Never Surrender. So we so far have sold 70 cans, which is $6,650 for Never Surrender, and actually, it's probably a little bit more than that, because I've auctioned two off, and they sold for like over $200. I kind of thought I should, maybe I should auction all the rest of them off. But, yeah, so we've, that's what we've done for the area, for Edwah County, giving back, and we just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity to let us do that. We still have about 30 pink cans left to sell. It's October. I actually sold three this morning that I emailed to them, so I was like, do they know I'm going to the council meeting and talking about this today? But it's been a good little fundraiser. More importantly, I think it's just when you see them out and about, you see, it just brings awareness and reminds people, hey, I might need to call and schedule my mammogram, or, you know, things like that. Make that doctor's appointment. I also want to say a special thank you to the Family Success Center, these guys. We couldn't do what we do without them. They screen all of our patients, they handle everything, they schedule all the tests. Yeah, we couldn't do what we do without them, for sure. I don't have the time in my day to do what they do, so thank you so much.
That's a great partnership.
And just again, thank you to Camp for last year even spearheading the Pink Trash Can Project, so.
Oh, well, thank you. You're welcome. That's a, it's a, it's great to have y'all here again, and Mayor, we ought to get a, maybe get a picture if we can, maybe surrounded the can down there. Get the Family Success ladies, if y'all would mind coming up, and, and get with the mayor, and, so we can put that on our social media pages and stuff like that.
And thank you for the later.
If they come out, yeah, well, I think they're gonna, are they gonna come up here? Yeah, I think.
Yeah, we could do that.
Yeah. Oh, I don't know. Some of y'all get down there, some of us stay up here. That way I can keep the meeting going. Maybe the ladies can get down there and join in, and stay up here. Yeah. Yeah, we'll... In the rear, where we belong.
Eddie, you look like...
All right, count three. One, two, three. One, two.
I still can't hear you.
Well, thank y'all.
I didn't know you were in here.
Oh, well, you're good, you're good.
This is...
We appreciate you ladies very much.
Thank you again for all that you're doing for our community.
Mayor, that fiscal, Mayor, that fiscal fitness task catching up with you there?
All right, we'll move to, oh, there we go. Yeah. Section, Agenda Item 8 is unfinished business. Item 8A is an ordinance. This amends City Code Section 106-74. This ordinance was presented last week for first reading. This will allow any commercial establishment with a valid business license and utilizing a single 90-gallon container to establish a garbage account for weekly litter collection at a rate of $50 per month. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion? Right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 8B is an ordinance amending City Code Section 106-87H to require that leaves and grass clippings be bagged for curbside collection. This ordinance was presented last week for first reading.
Mr. President, despite my feelings of this being a good idea, after strong opposition from Councilman Robinson, yourself, and the mayor, I would like to make a motion that we table this indefinitely.
All right. There's been a motion and a quick second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the ordinance for an indefinite period, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table.
Item 9 is a resolution authorizing participation in the Senior Nutrition Program and Grant. This continues sponsorship of the Senior Nutrition Program for fiscal year 2024 at Carver and Banks Park Community Centers. It authorizes grant acceptance through the East Alabama Regional Planning and Development Commission, Area Agency on Aging, and the amount is $136,905. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, I just want to clarify right now, this, one of the sites for this program is Banks Park. Historically, this has been operated out of Alabama City, and upon completion of the new community center in Alabama City, I believe this program will relocate back to Elliott Community Center once it's, the new Elliott Community Center is built. But those individuals in South Gadsden will still have access to the delivery portion of this program, so our seniors all over the city will still be able to receive the benefit from this.
Thank you for pointing that out. Any other comments? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 10 is a resolution authorizing application and acceptance of the 2024 ATRIP II grant funding through Alabama Department of Transportation. The funds will be used to improve the drainage system along George Wallace Drive from College Plaza to East Cherry Street. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 11 is a resolution authorizing rules and regulations as co-sponsor for Northeast Alabama Regional Airport. This approves rules and regulations for use of the airport or any of its facilities. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. President, just to, just to clarify, this, this particular resolution and the following one are both deliberate efforts on the part of our new airport administrator to, to really just modernize and professionalize our operations out there and make sure that we're running the airport in a way that is, it's intended to be run. So I think this is great. Good step forward for the airport.
Yes, I'll chime in. Mr. Tarver is in the audience today, and we want to thank you again for your leadership and your energy that you're bringing to the airport. I'm hearing really good things from, from a lot of folks, and we're just proud to have you in Gadsden and proud to have you at the airport. Thank you for all you're doing.
Thank you all.
Yes, sir. All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 12 is a resolution authorizing minimum standards as co-sponsor for Northeast Alabama Regional Airport. This approves minimum standards for commercial and aeronautical businesses using the airport. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 13 is a resolution authorizing agreement with Thomas M. McElrath. This is for architectural plans and specifications to construct a new concession stand and tournament office at the Gadsden Sports Park, and the amount is $20,000. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Is there any discussion?
So, Mr. President, this is, has to do with the practice fields currently, what they call down at the Sportsplex.
Right.
There was no concession stand at that location, and there's no tournament office, so this will help us with that facility and help the spectators not have to go to the Field of Dreams or to the, the one that's already built to purchase concessions.
I think that's a good idea. I rode through over there just last week. Things are really taking shape.
It's coming good. So they're almost through. I'd say they, they'll be through with this phase by the end of November, eighth, and, and then we'll, we're already bidding the next phase, as we speak.
Wonderful. Good news.
Well, Mr. President, if I could...
Yes, Councilman Wilson.
Add just one side note to that. As the mayor referenced, this latest phase includes a champions field, which is a field for special needs. Obviously, I know there's been a little conversation in the community about how much the city supports programs that address the needs for special needs and individuals in this community, and this is going to be a great one. This is something that none of our surrounding communities have, and people from all over this county and the region will be able to use to ensure that, that children with special needs get to participate in sporting activities just like everybody else.
That's right.
So really excited about the champions field.
Thank you. All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 14 is a resolution authorizing agreement with Total Entertainment. This is to provide for Christmas on the Coussa Ice Skating Rink event from December 2nd through December 23rd, and the amount is $87,750. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Is there any discussion?
So, Mr. President, this is down the hill from where Convention Hall used to be, up the hill from Marina Park and Spirit of American Citizenship Monument. We've done a lot of work there. It's where the future place of the Food Court will be, that we're establishing. But this is something that John Moore and Parks and Rec and Janet and the AMP, they're hosting. This is a phenomenal event. We're offering for quality of life for the people of Gadsden for something to do. Many people may realize that other cities, particularly Albeville did this last year, there will be a charge for ice skating, and then we'll have, we'll have a big white tent where you're overlooking the Coussa on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday night. There will be drinks served and food, and we're also having a lot of corporate events during the week, during the day hours. So it coincides with our Christmas lights on the, on the mountain, at Nockla Falls. It's a phenomenal idea, and I look forward for this thing to really taking off, and I think it's going to be a great event for our people and our community.
Sounds exciting. Appreciate the leadership there and the, and the vision.
And, Mr. President, just to add technically, it'll run from December the 2nd to December the 23rd.
Yes.
So two days before Christmas, so.
Any other comments? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 15 is an ordinance coming under first reading. This amends City Code Section 102-92 regarding health and life insurance premium rates for retirees. This ordinance has been presented today for the first reading, and the council will vote on it next week. Item 16 is new business. I believe we have...
Yes, Mr. President, I actually have several here. The first is an ordinance amending fiscal year 24 budget for a JAG grant. This is a grant that the Police Department of Gadsden, City of Gadsden, applied for on behalf of the Gadsden Police Department, and I believe the Edwah County Sheriff's Department will benefit from these, this equipment as well. This is a grant in the amount of $45,054. It will be used to purchase a series of, of equipment, including a 4G camera with thermal capabilities that will help our SWAT team and our police department identify individuals inside a home potentially in a dangerous situation. It'll also include another camera with Wi-Fi capabilities and a pole, a diation system, 28 infrared laser and white light illumination systems also. So this is a great grant. Again, free money for the city. You can never be upset about that. So with, with the agreement of my colleagues here, I'd like to suspend the rules and consider this under new business.
All right. There's been a motion to suspend the rules. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have unanimous consent for consideration.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Mr. President, the next one I have is a resolution from the Engineering Department authorizing an agreement with Tillman Consulting LLC for the Spring Rock Drainage Project. The total budgeted amount is $30,000. This is something that was in the budget that we recently passed, and will help get the process started for a much-needed drainage improvement project in the, in the Spring Rock area. So with, again, with no objection from my colleagues, I would like to ask that we suspend the rules and consider this under new business.
All right. There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt, sir.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
And finally, Mr. President, again, this is something that I think is, is one of those long-term strategic plans that's going to really benefit this city as a whole. This is an ordinance requested by the Public Works Department, which will amend our City Code Sections 106-78, 106-87, and 106-89 regarding solid waste collection and disposal. Essentially, as many of you know, Gadsden is one of the only cities in this area that offers to pick up household waste and debris, mattresses, refrigerators, dishwashers, couches, and we do that no charge, and it's really been bogging down our Public Works Department. It creates a lot of challenges with staffing and being more efficient at addressing the other cleanup that we have, projects we have. So what this would do is, is start the process of transitioning from just an open, free pickup of anything, anywhere, anytime, to a process where the Public Works Department would still offer these services for a small fee. You would call and schedule ahead of time, and Public Works would come out, you would make a payment, and they would pick this up, and it'll really free up our Public Works Department to focus on their day-to-day responsibilities while also still giving the citizens an option to, to pay for this service. So with this being a part of a much broader strategy of cleaning up Gadsden, you, I'm sure many of you have noticed that we've passed several ordinances over the last several weeks to address the debris and the trash in this community, and this will just be another step in that direction. So if there's no objections, I would ask that we suspend the rules and consider this under new business, please.
All right. There's been a motion to suspend the rules. Is there a second?
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have unanimous vote for consideration.
And, Mr. President, before I move to adopt, I just want to add one more thing. This, this ordinance, these changes, amendments to the City Code will not go into effect until December the 1st. In the meantime, you will see this body consider an additional resolution in, in the coming weeks that would define exactly what the charges would be and what the process would be for requesting a pickup of some of this household debris and how much that would cost. So this, again, will not go into effect if passed today until December the 1st. So with that in mind, I would ask that we move to adopt this.
Second.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
All right. Item 17 is Department Reports, Committees, and Boards. Have any of those this morning?
How would you like to report on Nockla Mountain, or Ty, about how we cleaned up and how we're starting the schedule?
I can, I'm excited to report that the majority, I'd say 99.9% of it, has been completed. If there's any, Chris, if there's anything up there we've missed, please let me know. We went through, me and Jason, a couple of the guys have went through, see if we have missed anything, but as of now, we can't find anything that we missed through the storm stuff. So we should be back on regular schedule and running our once-a-month pickup right now, so hopefully that's getting back on schedule really good.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Any other departments? Okay, we'll move to remarks by the mayor and council. Mayor Ford, would you lead us off, please?
Thank you. If you don't mind, when I get done, my daughter's in town from Fort Bragg, North Carolina, so I'm going to go take her to lunch.
By all means, yes.
First of all, we hope everyone has a safe and fun Halloween. We have a lot of events taking place here in Gadsden that you can locate on the website. We're hosting a family movie night this Sunday night at the amphitheater. We hope you all attend. We hope you post it on your Facebook pages. Gates open at 5:00 p.m. The movie starts at 6:30. There is a $2 person admission that will give you some Witch's Brew, which is non-alcoholic, because it's for the kids. And also, there's something else. John, what is it?
It was candy, trick-or-treat candy.
Trick-or-treat candy, yeah, of course. So we'll have candy for the kids. So we ask that you dress up, don't dress up, but come. It's a movie that was, it's the most popular movie going right now. That's all I can say, is for, for the movie rights. We'll have, we want to say congrats to the Gadsden City Titans, back-to-back region champs. Just so you'll know, they're playing a non-region game this Friday night, and then they will start the playoffs, and I do believe we are a home-field advantage because we're the first seed coming out of the gate, and if I'm incorrect, somebody, please correct me. City of Gadsden is hiring. If you're looking for a job, please look for postings on our website. We're also advertising with the Chamber of Commerce. We're also advertising more widely than we have in the past, so we can make sure we're getting the most qualified individuals, and we have a lot of openings now that the budget has passed. So if you know anyone looking for a job, please send them to Nick Call's office on the second floor to fill out an application, and we're trying to hire as fast as possible. So thank you.
Thank you. Tell Wilson I said hello.
I will, thank you.
Have a good luck.
Thank you.
All right, we'll go to the council. I think I'll turn to my left and go to, all the way up the mountain to District 7, Councilman Robinson.
Thank you, President Back. Just want to say thank you for Public Works, for all the work they did up there cleaning everything up. It does, I've got nothing but compliments from the employees. People even say how they get out of the truck and sweeps and things up, rake it up and get it really cleaned up. I've gotten several voicemails saying how they did a great job, so I want to thank y'all for that. Want to say thanks to Mr. Blackwell and Ms. Menes coming up here and talking to us about the, about the Board of Education. That was real educational. Enjoyed hearing that.
I saw what you did there.
It was educational. But enjoyed hearing that and, and love what they're doing. Also, just, just thank this council, I'm going to still, Councilman Smith, thank this council, this council and the mayor's office for what they're doing. I enjoy coming to Fairview Tuesday and making these decisions and being a part of what's going on and being part of a positive going forward. I mean, I don't care what you say, we are making right turns, doing the right thing. Like Councilman Wilson said, it may take a little while, but I believe in time, we're going to get this thing right, and it's going to be, be good to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Minatra?
I just appreciated the Never Surrender ladies coming today and talking about what they do and how important it is, and, and I'll make that pledge to buy that pink can to, to really say that I had a special friend that, that I want to, I want that pink can to remember her every day.
Thank you. Councilman Wilson?
Yes, Mr. President, I will, I just want to address one thing. This is a little bit of a, me eating some crow here, and I'll fall on the sword and I'll admit when I'm wrong. Last week, I made some comments in the process of the announcement about our transition transition of City Hall to the Regions Bank Building, and then also the announcement that we plan to acquire the building next door to it. Some of the comments I made, I think, probably got misconstrued a little bit by the public. And if anything that I said in any way negatively reflected on the Merrill Lynch Wealth Management team here in Gadsden, I apologize. I am dear friends with Walter Duke, so to J.D. Henderson and Walter Duke and Alicia Guyton, all the twelve or fifteen members there at Merrill Lynch, these guys are world-class wealth advisors. They're all certified financial planners. They're not in any way in danger of closing their operation or anything. They have a lease at that building that runs for the next three years, and even though the city is acquiring the building, they are gonna honor that lease. They'll continue to operate out of that location. And I mean, these guys have collectively have about two-hundred years' worth of experience in the financial management group. My friend Walter Duke was named one of the Forbes Magazine Best in State Wealth Advisors, I think for like the last four years, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two. Another kid there just got named in twenty-three as one of the best wealth management teams, Brooks Cole. So to all those guys at Merrill Lynch, I just want to tell you, I apologize. Obviously, in the financial world, you know, the tiniest little misstep can shake some people's confidence. And I want you to know that Merrill Lynch is a world-class operation. They got a ton of experience, and they'll be here in Gadsden for a long time. So I hope that clears that up. Thank you.
Thank you. Good job. All right. Councilman Avery?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just bear with me. I do have quite a few announcements, but I'll go as quick as I can.
I gotta go to lunch with Craig's daughter.
All right. So starting off, look, there's gonna be a special recognition on November the eighth at nine A.M. at Gadsden City High School for our Veterans Day program. So any veteran, anyone that is just interested in being there, I would ask as many people can pack that auditorium, will come out and just kind of, just give praise to those men and women who put their life on the line, that we have our freedoms as they are today in this country. And again, that's November the eighth at nine eight M. After saying that, I want to say roll tide, and I'll just say, I'll leave it at that because there's nothing else to be said about that. Also, twenty-twenty-three High School and Community College Day at Alabama A&amp;M. There'll be onsite acceptance, campus tours, scholarships, choir and band additions, and free lunch and admissions for the football team and more. This is eight-thirty eight M. at the Alabama A&amp;M Event Center, and that's Saturday, November the fourth. And there is transportation that is leaving Gadsden that will head there for anyone that is interested as it relates to academics as well as extracurricular activities that the Alabama A&amp;M University has to offer. Want to congratulate Gadsden's on this past weekend, if I'm not mistaken, the Miss Juneteenth Alabama is now, I'll read it as it's stated, officially a national Juneteenth contestant will go to, on to compete for the title of Miss National Juneteenth Scholarship Program Pageant twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four. Demai is a senior this year with a four-point-oh GPA. Her goal is to continue her education in college and train children and share God's love to all. And America welcomed Demai Taylor as a contestant for Miss National Juneteenth, who is a Gadsden resident. Excuse me. Gadsden Job Corps, Community Relations Council, and Workforce Development Council. The date is October the twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-three, on six-hundred Valley Street, Gadsden, Alabama. Join us to help leverage the job market. The time is at twelve-fifteen P.M. to two P.M. There is apprenticeship program, apprenticeships, partnerships program, Community Relationship Board, work-based learning outreach and community service, leisure time and employment. And these are some things that they need help with. Again, this is October the twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-three, six-hundred Valley Street, Gadsden Job Corps. In my closing, well, getting close to my closing, I'll put that up real quick. Join us, District Three and the business and residential community as we gather on Tuscaloosa Avenue on this Saturday from six P.M. to eight P.M. for trunk or treat. So the businesses will stay open late, residents, and some of the faith-based community organizations that are on the street as well. This gives the kids a safe opportunity to trick-or-treat because our community have very little sidewalks. And so we asking for you to park either at Carver or walking from Eleventh Street to Sixth Street or somewhere where vacant property is and just walk down the street. Tuscaloosa Avenue on each side will have candy and organizations, families, and businesses that will be helping us to aid a safe night event for trick-or-treating for the kids. Also, CCRC will be having an event at Carver Square from two to five, I believe, with their trunk or treat as well also. And then following that, after doing your trick-or-treating, walking, they have a chili contest also following that. So that'll be a busy, busy day on Saturday in Gadsden. So everybody that don't go to the Magic City Classic, come down to Tuscaloosa Avenue if you may. Now, to the Hat and to Gadsden City High School, I'll start it first to say that Gadsden City High School is not just, it's not all about football. Gadsden City High School has a great band. They have a great choral. They have a great theater program and orchestra and so many other activities and functions that I would ask that the City of Gadsden get behind as citizens and go and support these young men and women who are doing so well, representing our city. Classics, a regional eight, back-to-back champions, Gadsden City High School football team, Titans football team. May Jimison on eight October the thirteenth, they entered in, won. However, the Titans wanted to make sure there was no room for debate and lowered the hammer only at Huntsville this past week with the score of forty-one to zero. Wanted to say that and congratulates those young men and all those that work with them, but also congratulates the coach, Ali Smith, on being selected to coach in the North-South All-Star Football Game that will be December the twelfth through the fifteenth in Mobile, Alabama. And Coach Smith's statement was, "It's a special honor to be selected to represent our district in this showcase event," with Alabama High School Athletic Directors and Coaches Associations at the City of Mobile, making sure Coach Smith was a part of that opportunity. At this point, I think that ends my announcements. If it doesn't, we'll go with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Smith?
Thank you, Mr. President. Congratulations to the Titans. Great to see our superintendent and assistant superintendent here on today, Mr. Blackwell and Ms. Minas. Also, Never Surrender, we know it's Breast Cancer Awareness Month, but I want to give a shout out to all cancer survivors. Just give a shout out. I know, even as men, Councilman Robinson and myself in St. Louis, I believe it was, we had a chance to talk as men what it's like to have cancer, to deal with treatments. You just never know until it's in your body. I know you think you do, but until it's inside of your body, you really have no idea what it's like. So those, if you have family members, your caregiver, just really continue to encourage those, just battling with any type of cancer that you know of. So I want to give a shout out to those cancer survivors. Six hundred free mammograms, that's amazing. Half a million dollars in donations. So we want to give a shout out to that organization for all that they do. Public Works, thank you so much. Just got to bombard it with a lot of calls in District Two for the first time. Contacted Ms. King, and I guess she jumped right on it. I rode through. The next day, either it was cleaned up or being cleaned up, and we're super excited about getting back on a regular schedule. But thank you for all that you are doing. And also, I thank Back Forty, y'all got a new location?
Yeah.
Congratulations to Back Forty on their expansion.
In Huntsville, that'll be our third location.
In Huntsville. I saw that and want to just give a shout out.
Thank you.
That's all I have. Thank you to the mayor, all of his staff, and the council. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, council. Councilwoman Latham?
Thank you, President Beck. First of all, I would like to congratulate Coach Smith and the Titans. Congratulations to everyone that's come before us today, and thank you for the Never Surrender group and the great things that they are doing. I had the opportunity to check in on the fly-in at the Northeast Alabama Regional Airport, and so congratulations to Mr. Tarver on that first event for him. And we know that through his enthusiasm, next year will be bigger and greater. I do want to say thank you to the mayor and to engineer, Mr. Heath, for the Spring Rock project. It is a long-awaited project in District One. So I want to say to those constituents on Spring Rock that you have to trust the process. And so I know that there are several, one in particular, that would be excited about hearing what's going on today as it relates to that project. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I want to echo all the sentiments about the high school and the football and all the other items. I won't repeat those, but just a lot of good things happening in our city. We have a lot of good students. We have a lot of good athletes and a lot of talent. Appreciate our interim superintendents coming today, Mr. Blackwell and Ms. Minas. They gave good information. Reading is important. We need to be reading to our young people, especially third grade and under. Councilwomen Latham and Minatra have led the charge in partnering with our school system. If you know of a child in your neighborhood or household family, read to them. I think I've read where a child needs to hear fifteen thousand words a day. So they need to be read to. So open up a book and read to that child. And you'll probably be welcome to call the principal at a local elementary school and volunteer to help read. There's so much more we can do as a community, so I encourage all of us to step up and to help our young people, help our children. Want to bring attention also, you probably have, a few weeks ago, we had Noah Meredith here to speak to the council about his Eagle Scout project. The Gadsden Times was very nice to do an article to bring more awareness to that. I went last Saturday to Southern Hill Cemetery, and I think I was maybe the oldest person there, or almost the oldest person there. After I was through helping dig one-hundred-foot stone places, whatever you want to call those things, I felt like the oldest person there. I didn't know. You know, sometimes you jump off in something and you don't know what you're getting into. At about, I got there at nine, and about ten o'clock, I thought, what have I done? I was too proud to leave, so I had to just stay. But I haven't worked like that in quite some time. But y'all, what a great project that is. And Shari Bostic does such a good job in revitalizing Southern Hill Cemetery. There's such a story to be told there, a story of respect and redemption. And I really applaud Noah Meredith for stepping up. He's a sophomore in high school. He is, this Saturday at nine o'clock, if you just want to go and just watch and cheer him on, they're gonna be pouring cement in one-hundred forms for, I guess it's the base for tombstones, that Ms. Bostic has marked through GIS capabilities that there are graves with no headstones. So there's now going to be one-hundred marked graves, and it's just a great undertaking. It's kind of a spiritual journey when you walk up that hill, when you've reached the top of it. If you haven't been there before, it's at the very, you go down Walnut Street, like going toward the old Gadsden High School away from the river. You get to Sixth Street at Johnson's Giant Foods, turn left. You go all the way down Sixth Street till it stops, and you can park on the side there. The gates should be open. You can kind of go through back in the Wildlife Park, and then you walk up a hill, and that Southern Hill Cemetery starts right there. So if you just want to go and just say thank you, that would be, that would mean the world to Noah and the people that are helping. There was probably forty to fifty volunteers there Saturday from nine to three o'clock or so. So that is a wonderful project, and we need to congratulate our young people for stepping up and doing things like that. So if you will, go by and see Noah and Shari Bostic at Southern Hill Cemetery this Saturday at nine o'clock. Also, I want to end with thanking the mayor for trash and debris and cleanup. He stated from the very beginning, he wanted to clean up our city, and he's cleaning up our city, much due in part to Ty Jackson and Howell Matthews and Jason Hill and others in our public work, all in our Public Works Department. Tina King is involved with that as mayor's liaison over the Public Works Department. Gadsden looks a lot different. It's been almost a year now that the mayor has been in, and the administration has been here, and this new administration. And just, for example, right here at City Hall, where you turn left on Walnut Street, that looks so much better, and that was painstaking. You have to pull up weeds. If you ever pulled up weeds, you do it one at a time, and that's what the Public Works did. So thank you all for what you did. It looks nice. That's one of the gateways to our city. And, you know, we're taking pride in our city. The mayor's office is taking pride. The council's taking pride, and we want to ask you to take pride also. Clean up your neighborhood. It's okay. You don't have to wait for the city to come along and pick up a cup or whatever it is. We can all do just a little bit, and if we all did just a little bit, it's gonna add up to a lot. So I encourage you to take pride in your neighborhood, in your city, and we'll have a clean city, which will do so much for Gadsden and for all the citizens. So with that, any further ado, we will wish you all a good day. See you back next week.